And I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order. And please note attendance Denise. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, not a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started tonight, I just wanted to take a minute to, on behalf of the Board, to express our condolences to the families of Matthew Albrecht and Douglas Bonham. Doug was a teacher, a fifth and sixth grade teacher at Bethany, and Matthew was a junior at Silverton High School. They were in a tragic car accident on March 4th and both of them were killed. And so, two lives, two young lives, lost way too soon. And on behalf of the Board, I just wanted to offer our condolences to their family and tell them that you're in our thoughts and prayers. Okay, we, as usual in March, we have quite a long consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval? No, is there, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I've motioned to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, let's move in second to approve the consent agenda.
I would like to declare a potential conflict of interest on item F. I'm in favor of this consent agenda, but my daughter is a teacher, so she's on the list.
Okay. Anything else, any other discussion?
I didn't even get my packet till today, so I haven't really had a chance to read a whole lot of what happened. I had about forty minutes to read it, best I could, before we got here, so.
Okay, well, we have a motion in a second on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you, Todd, did you want to abstain, or did you want to abstain?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. Okay, student reps, Courtney, you're flying solo tonight.
Hi. So, ASB is currently in the process of putting on the Mr. S.H.S. pageant. After many difficult decisions, we are happy to announce the 2016 contestants Alex Canfield, Sam Roth, Matthew Edmonds, Reagan Shuey, Lee Aiman, Houston Winslow, Blake Cosgrove, and last but not least Kirk Martenson. The boys are getting their dance number put together and are working on their individual fundraisers. Last week, the boys and the Mr. S.H.S. committee had the opportunity to go to Medical Teams International to see firsthand what they are raising money for. The pageant will take place on Saturday, April 16th, at seven o'clock. Silverton High School's FBLA chapter is busy getting ready for the State Business Leadership Conference taking place on April 7th through the ninth. At this conference, our students will participate in events such as business ethics, emerging business ideas, sales presentation, electronic career portfolio, and help desk. The She Is Safe Club is currently planning a dress and suit drive for a school in Seattle, Washington. This high school is home to kids from all across the world, including adoptees, refugees, and others who don't have the kind of money to buy a dress or suit for their prom. The FFA, at a recent competition, our FFA kids brought home an outstanding number of successes. Ben Dahl placed first in oxy-acetylene welding, and Caleb Kunderman placed second. Andrew Dumer placed first in TIG welding, and Monte Martin second in MIG welding. There are at least sixteen different schools competing in the contest. FFA is now preparing for state convention coming up over spring break. Our swimmers had a great season this year with the boys team placing third in districts with a ten-to-one record, and the girls team placing second with a ninety-two record. Our team also sent ten swimmers to the state meet. Our boys basketball team finished with a great season with a record of seventeen to eight overall and eleven to three in district. We also had our senior Sam Roth make first team all-league. The boys are looking forward to another great season next year. Our wrestlers had a fantastic season, placing fourth overall in districts. We had several wrestlers advance to the state tournament, with senior Braden Sin placing sixth in state, and senior Austin Reed bringing home the state title for the 134-pound weight class. In a nerve-wracking weekend, our Lady Foxes fought their way all the way to a state championship. After defeating Corvallis in a nail-biting fourth-quarter win, they went on to face Springfield and did the same thing, winning the state title by one point. Senior Leah Parsons was named the 5A state tournament MVP, and we're all very proud of her and all of our girls. Finally, our spring sports team kicked off with their practices last week and are looking forward to seasons full of improvement, success, and fun. And that is all I have for you guys tonight.
Okay, any questions for Courtney? Okay, thank you Courtney, good job. Okay, I'd like to open it up to our first audience with visitors tonight. As always, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or under. And would anyone care to address the Board? Great. Also, when you come up, please take a moment and sign in and then introduce yourselves to us. Up here too, yeah. Thank you, Ray.
I've criticized the Board and City Council for not speaking into the microphone, so I'll try to do that. I'm Ray Cazor, 828 Sun Valley Court, Silverton, Oregon. Retired high school science teacher, and just an accident, I happen to be wearing this sweatshirt today, so it's still on. So, very briefly, congratulations to all the athletic teams at Silverton High School that have done pretty well, but also, the Wind Ensemble, under the direction and leadership of Mr. Petrick, is also qualified for state, and so they'll be going sometime in April, so we're not through. Just a little bit, I happen to take private panel lessons in grade school, and so I was able to enter in the Silverton High School band as a freshman with no prior trombone experience. Learned how to play the trombone for four years at the high school, and that allowed me to march in the Oregon State Football Marching Band. And I, I don't know, I may be the only Silverton resident that got to march in the Rose Bowl Parade.
Wow.
Yeah, a long time ago.
That's impressive.
Yeah. In any event, I'm here to talk about robots. Some of you may know, when I was teaching, I was a robot coach at the high school, did that for three or four years, and then a couple of years after, I retired. And along with that, I'm a retired professional mechanical engineer, but I still get emails from the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, and I may get two of those a week, and there's eight or nine or ten topics of interest, current interest, about all kinds of new things in technology. And I would not hesitate to say that every week, there's at least one, or maybe more, topics that are presented there that have to do with robots. We're all reading about driverless cars, and that's just a small part. And so, and I think there's a pretty good program going on in the elementary schools, and we had one in the high school that didn't, it's not their issue. We had it last year. So, I think that's, could be a very useful part of any STM, EM program that you want to consider. There's a tremendous demand, some of the students will qualify for college scholarships under the current program that's primarily sponsored by U.S. First Bank. And so, I think it's important, Andy told me that Mark Cannon is looking for someone to replace Ms. Miller, who is interested in taking on a robot, and I think that's great, because it was really difficult to be the coach, or the manager, if you will, when you didn't, were not in the building, didn't have contact with students. And so, a person who is willing to do that and is in the building, that's really good. The other part is, as far as I know, there's been no District General Fund money presented in the budget for high school robots, period. There has been some grant money given. There's quite a bit of money out there that might be available. After the robot program died, if you want to use that word, this fall, we heard that GK equipment in Donald was going to, was going to support us to the tune of, I don't know, how much, five or ten grand. And the big robots that we were working on the past year, that's like a fifteen or twenty-thousand-dollar a year program, if you're going to really do it right. Some of those teams may have twenty or twenty-five kids in them, groups of students who do marketing and publicity, and then the actual people working on the robot may have, the robot itself may be broken down into three or four different parts. Somebody's working on the drivetrain, somebody's doing the programming, and so on. So, a going program is not a small endeavor. And so, there was some budget impact. And so, most, at the very least, I think there should be support for the coach. I would, I would call that person more of a manager than a coach. And likely, there are volunteers in the community that could help with some of the activities as well. So, that's what I wanted to urge you about. I know it's budget time, and so, plop a little money in the kitty. Thank you.
Any questions for Ray? Okay, thank you very much, Ray. That's good information. Would anyone else like to address the Board? Okay, we have another chance, a little later in the meeting. Moving on to discussion items, we have one proposed new policy, GCBDD slash GDBDD, which has to do with sick time. This is the first reading. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I wonder if there's one mistake. In the third paragraph, it says the district shall allow eligible employee to assess up to, access up to forty hours. Do you mean accrue there?
You know, that was, that was used by choice, because we have the option to front-load forty hours with employees that would qualify, or they can accrue it. So, it really just-
As I read this, you're only allowing employees to use forty hours a year of sick leave, is that-
Unless they're covered by the collective bargaining agreement. So, so let me just share a little bit of information here. This is, this is state legislation that's specific to multiple employees across the state, and I think in some cases, who were not providing their employees with sick leave. We do, I'm going to pick a number, but I think it's ninety-five percent above of our employees, we fulfill every sick leave requirement, and then some, it's covered in the collective bargaining agreement, or their contract, let's say for administration. And so, with that said, we have some employees, like coaches, say for instance, or some of the folks that are on temporary contracts, that we are obligated now with this legislation to be able, or to provide them sick leave up to a maximum of forty hours, depending on their time in the district.
Technically, you don't have to give them sick leave at all if they're, if they work less than ninety days, according to law.
And that could very well be true. Well, I'm certain that is true. I don't know if this new legislation changes any of that. This is truly brand-new. I mean, June of 2015, and implemented, actually, this year, January 2016, so we're-
And Booley's still trying to figure it out themselves on what it really means.
That's right. In fact, there's a couple of questions that Booley has raised that has caused us to even put a little pause to this. OSBA has shared with us that the template language is not going to change, but interpretation will change based upon Booley's influence. As an example, we have to provide our substitute teachers with sick leave, which sounds a little peculiar, because they are taking care of our sick teachers in most cases. But Booley has interpreted the ruling to be that the substitute employees are required to notify the district within twelve hours or more prior to their actual sick leave, where OSBA's interpretation is twenty-four hours prior to the sick leave. So, there's still a little bit of arm wrestling going on with things like that. It's not going to change the intent of the law, or the purpose of the law. So, you know, you have three months now to process this, and for us to get a little bit more interpretation, Danny is all over this as well, so, but we have to get it in front of you, so we can get it adopted as soon as possible.
That's, I'm okay with it. I just, that word, access there, that just doesn't seem to fit to me, but-
Well, we can sure be playing with that one.
But if that's your intent, that's fine. Because I fully expect we'll have employees using more than forty hours of sick leave at a time. Per year, rather, as it states here.
Yeah, and that could be, again, we're not talking about our traditional regular employees. We're talking about, I think, those employees that fill short-term temporary contracts, such as coaches.
Which is defined in the first paragraph. Okay, I'm with you. Thank you.
You have another policy currently in your handbook titled Leaves and Absences. It's GCBDD, GB, GBBD, and it does actually reference sick leave in there a little bit, and it also talks about when the district can act or require medical documentation from any employee when, you know, they've had extended leaves. And it gives a lot more definition to what we currently have. This one really almost just replicates what the state law requires us to replicate, specific to sick leave, where the other leave, leave and absences has to do with other leaves as well.
All right. I'm very certain that if an employee works less than ninety days, you do not have to give them sick leave, so that helps you at all.
We'll double-check that, yeah.
That's worth looking at.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, moving on. Discussion item B, makeup of district closure on January 4th, 2016 due to inclement weather. We had, we had a snow day on, back on January 4th, we've only had one this year. It's been our practice to make up days, sometimes if we have more than one, sometimes not. So, it's totally a board decision. We can make it an action item later tonight, or if nobody sees, feels the need to do that, we can just let it be. My personal feeling is, since we only had one, there's probably no big reason to make it up, so.
Yeah, I think I'm in the minority on this one, but the school day costs the district about a hundred thousand dollars a day, I believe, and that's taxpayer money that we could be using as a school day for education. The way the calendar works, that day could be made up on Friday, complete the full week, and then teachers have to come back on Monday, so I'd be in favor of making it up.
I'd agree with Wally, just, just for the educational purposes alone, so.
Couple of questions. Obviously, first one is, to our seniors, has no impact, we have enough hours, that without this makeup, they're totally fine, correct? Okay, and the other part would be, I know, we, I think we talked about this maybe at the last Board meeting, that even the rest of the students were well above the minimum hours, as stated by the State of Education, Board of Education, in terms of how many education hours we have in our days, and also banked up to that point in the year. So, even if we didn't make up that day, we would be totally covered under the, what the Oregon State Board of Education dictates to us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I guess, you know, if we've, if we're more than covered, I mean, I see Wally's point and Todd's point, but if we're more than covered, you know, and it doesn't impact our seniors, and it doesn't impact, you know, our other kids, maybe we should just let this one go. Now, I think I'd be on the other side of the fence if it was two. But I think if it was one, I don't know if I'd bring them back, and I don't know if I'd bring them back to staff on Monday.
Well, but you say it doesn't impact them, it doesn't negatively impact them, but it could have a positive impact by having that extra day. That's one way I'm seeing it, you know, and why should we, why should everything be catered to minimums, you know? Do we meet the minimum? Do we meet the-
I believe we're more than the minimum.
Well, I understand that, but why, it's a day, so.
Let's keep them in school all the way through the end of June, then, you know? We're going to go to that, you know? No, I don't mean to be flippant there, I'm just, I understand your point, Todd, I do. I think it's just, again, come back to predicate, if we've had one day in the past, and again, I'm citing my, my junior nature here on the School Board, but in the past, when we've had one, we have not made that up, correct?
Not always, sometimes we've made them up.
Sometimes we have.
Yeah, it's just a board decision.
So, let me ask you this, historically, what has been the, kind of the tipping point, whether we make up one or, or not, if it's just one day? Has there been special circumstances that have dictated that?
More often how it falls in the week.
Yeah.
Say if we had two, we had two days right now, rather than just one.
Yeah.
I propose we just come back on that Friday, but not make up the second day, because it would be forcing kids to come back on a Monday.
Yeah.
For one day, that'd probably be pretty worthless.
Right, right.
Kind of depends how it falls.
Now, you're asking them to come back on a Friday, and then teachers come back on a Monday.
Teachers will come back on their last day on Monday. Well, I would propose we just make it an action item for later, unless there's other discussion on it right now. Okay, we'll make it an action item, and take a vote. Okay, our last discussion item, our next work session on March 28th is going to be a joint session with the Silverton City Council. We do this a couple of times a year, just to touch base with each other and talk and discuss issues that we have in common. We have an agenda for that meeting, and it was at your station tonight, and this is just kind of to let the community know this is going on, and if anybody has anything they'd like to see added to that agenda, any concerns, let either Andy or I know, and we can take care of that, so. Unless anybody has anything to say on that, it'll also be at six o'clock. So, I, right here, at six o'clock, not at the, not at the district office, it'll be here.
Thanks for that reminder.
And I'm kind of thinking, you know, if we can keep this meeting an hour, hour and a half, we'll probably meet ourselves for a short, a little bit after that, our own, you know, short work session. We'll probably have a couple of things to go, so.
If I can interject there, Mr. Chairman, you may have an, in fact, it's scheduled for you to have an action item at that meeting for approval of your new maintenance director.
Oh, okay.
So, again, realizing you typically do not take action at work sessions, but this one is, is time-sensitive, and I think important that we get out in front of you as soon as possible, so.
Okay, okay. So, remember, March 28th, six o'clock. And there won't be dinner. So, maybe for- Okay, any other discussion items tonight? Okay, administrative staff reports. Andy, Schleter Campus Project update.
Yeah, we have three, three topics to share with you this evening. One of them is, again, as I've been doing monthly for the last few months, an update on the Schleter Campus Reactivation Project. We have our meeting with the contractor and architect, and I believe even a couple of subs tomorrow morning. So, we are, we are literally this close to having hard-hats on the place and excavators out there tearing up concrete and getting things moving. And we anticipate that will occur within the next few days, possibly the next week or so, but the contractor is, is ready to go. We have been working closely with the city and the fire district in some final compliance requirements, as I shared with you last month. We have those determined now. Most of those are specific to fire life and safety matters, from the fire district especially, but there have been some ADA requirements that were not reflected in the construction documents, which we're at ninety-five percent construction documents, so we always leave ourselves a wiggle room of what needs to occur for the last portion of the construction documents until they're completed. So, as a result of that, with some changes, it actually, the net impact on the budget is that it will cost you a little bit more. We actually saved some money on a couple of the decisions, but because of some of the public works and fire departments or fire district requirements, we are having, and ADA requirements, we're having to increase our costs. And so, I gave you a one-page summary sheet just this evening, which says at the top, Silverton Middle School Project Update, March 14th, 2016. This is not an unfamiliar document to you, you've seen it a number of times in the past, I'm trying to update it each month as I can. And so, with the, if you go about a third of the way down, you'll see the main changes under, which says construction contractor, the 1.43 million dollar contract that you've already approved, the estimated, estimate changes for ADA, public works, and fire life safety are at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, based upon the input that we're receiving from the fire district and from the city. These have, mostly have to do with the location of the fire department connection out in front on Schleter. We also have had to make some changes to where the fire hydrant line, because we'll have two fire hydrants on campus, where they hook into James Street. There are some very specific ADA requirements within the building, even though we were using the building just six years ago, we're required to make some changes that weren't anticipated at the time of the construction documents. So, all that said, again, we're still at, are very close to the budgeted amount, and we're working extremely hard, we, meaning Joel and me and the architect, on keeping it to that, that point. So, I'm pleased to share with you that we're there. We still have a hundred thousand designated contingency in there. Whether we have to tap into that, we probably will, but we won't know for certain until we get into the project. But I just want to keep you updated and informed on what that looks like. So, moving ahead.
We've talked for some time that the fire and life safety items were a risk item to the project. Did that figure change at all? I don't recall what the figure was before, as we were talking about it. Was there an estimate before?
Well, there was an estimate within the construction documents, and those are extensive, Wally, but it did change. As an example, we had, we had attempted to put the fire, fire department connection on the northeast corner of the building, if you know where the old staff room is, and tried to put a small closet in there for the fire department connection. That wasn't allowable, because the fire department connection has to be on the front of the building somewhere, and actually away from the building.
Right, and that's been negotiated for quite a while.
Yeah, exactly. And so, that was one, one change to that. The existing fire department connection on James Street is actually going away, because they want both of the connections on front. There's one existing on the Schleter side of the building, right on the building, and then there'll be a second one in front. But as a result of the fire department connection going away on the James Street side, we actually have to put in a double-
Double back.
Double backflow device, and we have a single backflow device there that was installed years ago. And, but the fire district and the city have been, I think, fairly cooperative with us, because some of the mandates around some of those things really could have been quite different, but knowing that it's a fully decommissioned building without any combustibles inside makes all the difference for us to be able to manage some of those fire safety matters, really, in a different way than would be if we were using that building, or if we had any combustibles in there.
Okay, so the value of the risk actually grew from what we talked before.
Correct.
Okay.
So, those, I mean, there are a number of smaller and larger items than that, Wally, that I, what I can share with you is that, you know, between the efforts of Joel and our architect and engineers, we've really, really been doing some great work with the city and the fire district in managing this project, which, as you know, is quite unique. The, you have another document in front of you this evening that I wanted to share with you. A couple of meetings ago, I shared with the Board that you have some remaining bond dollars from the Silverton High School construction, and I think it's important that I put this final list in front of you, and it is, part of it is completed, the other part is in a prioritized list. And as of March 8th, you have three hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars left in that account, if you're funded four-twenty. Some people have asked, well, why was there still money left in there? Well, there's money still left in there, because we're still completing some last, final projects. As an example, the memorial garden at the high school was just finished, and we're completing the blinds for the classroom and the office areas, and there's no, there's no reason other than we're just finally getting them done, is the reason for why some of these projects have yet to complete. But you also, the Board at the time anyway, preserved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the re-roofing project, which was to occur within five to eight years or so after completion of the high school. That was completed last summer, and that, the cost for that was significantly less than what we had budgeted for that, for that roofing project. So, as a result, those dollars, we actually reviewed the value engineering list, and reviewed some of the other conversations that occurred. And so, if you take a look at use of funds in planning stage prioritized, underneath that, the majority of those, or at least the first four, not the majority, the first four, are specific to the B-wing classrooms. And those items were all removed from the original, from the original list of projects, simply from a value engineering standpoint. But the B-wing, it was the original classroom wing of the school campus. And the bond allows you to make a number of improvements across the campus, but the majority, of course, was focused on the new construction, in addition to some improvements to the B-wing. So, as an example, there was some, some network improvement, windows were replaced, siding, of course, roofing, things like that were specific to the B-wing, have all occurred. Now, you have some additional, or not additional, some remaining projects that are specific to the B-wing that are going to get us, I think, where we need to be, so that there's uniformity across the building with, with all of these projects. so that there's uniformity across the building with all of these projects. The smoke detectors are the original smoke detectors from the nineties, network and server infrastructure. I thought this was rather interesting because I, even though I was part of the conversation at the time, the server infrastructure was never updated at completion of Phase Two. It always relied upon Phase One infrastructure and networking. So that's going to be a pretty significant change right there that we're going to be allowed to do. In fact, Brett Milliken commented to me that, that it was, he was really becoming very concerned because we just increased our bandwidth to the, to the high school, actually to the entire district for that matter, to three hundred megabits per second, where literally with just a few years, the requirement's going to be at five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred, it's just going up. But the current infrastructure of Silverton High School will not handle more than three hundred megabits per second with existing equipment. So we're stuck. So I think this is timely, it's good, we've got sufficient revenue left to be able to handle these projects. Again, in a prioritized way, so that if we run out of bond dollars before then, the final projects wouldn't be completed. But I wanted you to see that and of course ask me any questions if you have any. But those are the projects as we see it right now, moving ahead.
We just saw the list tonight, but I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I see a couple of safety items that are a little further down the list. One is stanchions for the auditorium, the other one is access control for the shop next door.
Right.
How come those are further down the list?
Well, and we can surely move things around, Wally. The stanchions for the auditorium are actually traffic, walking traffic control stanchions. Like, we have them in the gymnasium, just a few of them, you know, they got the cords.
I was thinking something different.
What's that? Disneyland lines.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the access control equipment to the exterior doors, that's actually to allow access to the scene shop and the mat room. And I think, I think a total of about four doors on that side, I mean, the north side of the campus, where currently you cannot, it's a, it would be a coded access to those doors where currently the people have to go clear around to the front in order to shut off the alarm.
So it's more convenient and safety than.
It's going to create convenience more than anything.
Thank you.
And that area is used quite a bit after hours.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Athletic field scoreboards, is that on the Pine Street campus?
It is exclusively, right.
For baseball or soccer?
For all the green space fields, we have the football field, baseball field, we have, a number of those fields don't have scoreboards.
Oh, okay, so it's not doing anything with the ones that are, because there's already one for soccer.
Right, right, none of that would change. Additional scoreboards and small scoreboards for those additional fields.
Okay. Other questions for Andy on this?
So back to the middle school project, the Mark Twain cover area, how big is that supposed to be?
The, the plan is for that to be fifty, about forty-eight actually, by, excuse me, fifty by ninety-eight foot structure. And we're working with Victor Madge on the design of that. We looked at a number of options up closer to the building, but the, the amount of cutting and filling up there would be significant enough that we would have to be putting in a fairly significant retaining wall to keep the foundation of the actual school in check. So we're actually going to be putting the covered play area over the existing flat concrete basketball court down below, which I think is a pretty good location. It's a little further for the kids and for the staff to have to travel down there, but I think under the circumstances, it's going to be just fine.
Did they look into any of the pre-engineered buildings?
We haven't gone out to bid yet, but we have asked Victor to look at multiple options for.
So with that, we wouldn't even need an architect, really, I mean.
Yeah, we still have to design it and permit it and do all of that. And I'm not qualified to do that, I don't think Joel is. I'm not certain we have the staff to do that or the expertise to do that with something like that.
Well, a lot of those that are pre-engineered, that's, that's one of the, one of the draws to that is you don't need to have the architect sign off on those. You know, we can just put out pole building type.
Sure, sure.
And save some money that way, possibly.
That's, yeah, we can look into that, for sure. We're also having Victor help us with location of the playground, location on campus and movement of that. There will be some cut and fill for the playground equipment, which will occur up on the hillside. But further away from the building, it'll be a much smaller cutout, so it won't impact anything of the concerns that we would have with a large covered play area at Mark Twain.
Good. Any other questions?
Finally, I just want to draw your attention to one, one more item. It's the third item on there, it's called the Oregon Rising Campaign. You'll be hearing more about this over the next couple of months, but this is a cooperative effort between OSBA, OEA and COSA, really to draw a lot of attention to the good that Oregon schools are doing. This is intended to create, in the words of the Oregon Rising folks, hundreds of opportunities for people across the state of Oregon to contribute, to share what their, what their vision for Oregon schools looks like for the next number of years. I suppose if you can make a comparison, it's similar to what we did as a visioning process for our district, but these three groups are attempting to do something very similar at the state level. I think part of it is to seek additional state support, legislative support for adequate school funding, which continues to be a challenge in most legislative sessions. And second to that, just realizing that there are lots of great things going on in Oregon schools and that Oregon schools deserve to get a ton of credit for a lot of the great things that they're doing. So you'll be hearing more about this Oregon Rising Campaign, great schools, great state. I think that the title itself really speaks to the value of the process. There's no obligation on our part as a district. However, I have asked the administrative team to support the cause by showing the video and supporting documents within PTC meetings. It's likely I'll bring something to you as a board and even work to have some kind of other meetings within the district, let's say even at the budget committee meetings, to help provide this kind of information in support of Oregon Rising. So more to come on that, just wanted to draw your attention to it.
Very good, thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Steve, financial report, food services, budget process.
Yeah, so your regular financial statement is enclosed and that's through February twenty ninth. Everything continues to track well for the general fund. I wanted to drill down tonight more in the food services arena, which obviously all funds are included in your financial statements, but I brought a supplementary page tonight with some more detail. Did you all get that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it basically gives a little more detail on where we're at year-to-date for food service and compares to last year. The revenue for food service shows a little bit higher than your, what shows in your regular financial statement. That's just because I didn't have the February claim amount yet when I did these statements, but it's based on our actual amount on the supplemental page. So the two columns basically are year-to-date, July through the end of February, comparing this period of time for this fiscal year versus last. It's been about a year since we went to SEDEXO, so it's a good time to take a look at that. But basically, as you can see, through February of this year, we are eight thousand dollars to the good, whereas at this time last year through February, we were six thousand dollars in the hole. So that's an improvement of about fourteen thousand dollars. I do project that, as you recall, for fourteen fifteen, we ended the year at just shy of fifty thousand dollars in the red for the food service operation, which we've talked about when we reviewed our audit report. This year, I project we're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars in the red at the end of the year, but that will cut the operating deficit from last year in half. The reason that even though we're positive through February that we would end up slightly negative at the end of this year is because classified employees are paid over a twelve paycheck, so September through June with three checks in June. So, so there's a heavy amount of payroll at the end of the year for the work they did through the course of the whole year, whereas there's not a lot of revenue in June, of course, with about half the month of operations. So when you annualize all that out, I would still project that we would be in the red, but I believe a fifty percent reduction of the operating deficit is a, is a good place to start for the first twelve months with this new structure. So that's just a snapshot of where we're at and if you have any questions, you can let me know. As far as the budget, that was the third item on my agenda tonight. It's, it's the busy time for budgeting, doing the heavy lifting with like getting the school and department budgets together. The principals have been working hard here the last couple of weeks on their budget worksheets and getting some back here at the end of this week, maybe some also right after spring break and then finish working with departments after spring break and getting that budget put together for the April twenty-first budget committee meeting. We did just receive our first official state school fund estimate from ODE last week for two thousand sixteen, seventeen. And while it is the second year of the biennium and it's the higher funding year, because they fund forty-nine percent in the first year, fifty-one percent in the second year, the projected state school fund revenue for our district came in about two, two and a half percent less than we expected to see because there is actually an increase in statewide enrollment by about six thousand students and also they, every January, they use new poverty data from the census. That's a new thing that they started in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen year. And our poverty data decreased by about thirty percent, which it's a good thing for the community, but obviously it means less revenue in our waiting. So we're just looking at that impact and obviously with this budget, we are looking to fund, you know, schools at the same staffing levels as far as classroom instruction and be able to also meet our contractual obligations for our bargaining agreements as well, there's some increased cost there as well. So we're working the numbers and by the time we get to our first meeting on April twenty first, hopefully we'll have something exciting to share. It's always, it's always a challenge, though.
Yeah, okay.
So quick, going back to the food service.
Yeah.
Do you think on a trajectory to be in the black or do you think?
For this year?
For next year.
Oh, for next year. Well, I think with, with the full year, with SEDEXO and the changes that have occurred through the course of this year, I think there's, there's some adjustment period, obviously, and, but with, with one year of kind of doing the same thing and kind of finding our way, I think that we would be able to take a good, hard look at this during the summer about, you know, what, what else we can do, you know, to, to cut that deficit even further as we go into next year. I think we'll be better positioned to do that.
And should we be more aggressive on raising prices or is that going to cut back on our overall revenue?
Well, it's hard to say. There is a requirement by ODE that you have to have, you have to meet a certain price requirement, which has to be looked at when we look at the price, at the prices, but we did just raise prices this year. So we'll have to take a look at that as well as what our staffing needs are and, you know, get further recommendations from Sue Ann and, you know, go from there. And, you know, we don't know, you know, what the federal reimbursement rate may look like next year and that type of thing. There's another transition piece this year. One of the reasons the local sales is down compared to last year is because reduced price students this year are now fully funded through a state supplement, forty cents for every lunch served. So reduced price students, where they didn't have to pay for breakfast before, they, they don't have to pay for lunch either. So, so that results in a reduction of local sales, but also we do get some state reimbursement for that as well. So there's just a lot of things kind of changing and I think this is kind of a transition year. And I think, I think ultimately, yes, we will be better positioned to try to take that number down even further next year. I don't know if we'll, you know, be able to get it down to zero next year, but, you know, I think we have, we have a chance to reduce it further, but then as we go into the seventeen nineteen biennium, the first rates are going to go up again. So that's going to affect the cost of our labor. Which affects all funds, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Steve, the reason the local sales are down and the state reimbursements are up is because of that new, the new way they figure that then?
That is, that is part of it. There's, we also did receive for the first time this year, a state farm-to-school grant, which was worth nine to ten thousand dollars that we didn't have last year, but that's money coming in and then, you know, food costs going out. But we didn't have that opportunity last year. So part of it is that and part of it is the state reimbursement. We're receiving about a thousand dollars a month for that new state reimbursement so far that they've provided. What was the other, the other piece? I had another, another thought come in here.
I'll interject what you're thinking about that just for a second, Steve. The, the other reason, Mr. Chair, is that the, is that the, we had students purchasing all-the-cart food items over the course of the last few years, which added revenue, but it's not reimbursable revenue. In other words, it's, they're non, they were non-qualifying lunches and there was some real concerns about compliance by even allowing that in the first place. So as a result of compliance, we've eliminated that unless they've already had, had purchased a lunch that met the nutritional requirements as required by law. So as a result, the drop in all-the-cart purchases, which was not appropriate or necessarily legal in every case, had to go by the wayside and that's another reason for the drop.
In the local sales. That was what I was trying to say.
It's amazing how complicated the government can make lunch.
It's a piece of pizza.
But I will share with you too, that just if you think about, well, when you took this action a little over a year ago, the action was really hinged upon two variables that I think are important to stress right now. That is your, your increased participation by students and, and turning the tide so that instead of going into the red further, you're going into the black further. And based upon this information, at this time last year, you were getting close to forty-nine thousand dollars in the red. That's the deepest this district has ever been in the red from a food service standpoint. And to see this kind of a turnaround in a year that we're down into the twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in the red anticipated, I think is, you know, credit to the decision that you made to, to bring SEDEXO onboard and to, to allow this to occur. Again, I know you want to do a thorough review of this and really think hard about moving on with a similar model that we have right now, but what you'll be hearing from me based upon this information is, is a recommendation that we do continue the current model. I believe it's working, I believe the metrics demonstrate that it's working and I think we're going to continue to improve as we move ahead.
So unless I'm misunderstood, it sounded like we're not necessarily selling more, just we have more money coming back, more reimbursement. So there was, like Steve said, there was what, ten thousand from the farm, food-to-farm grant? And then a thousand dollars a month for being reimbursed?
And reimbursable meals through, through the federal program. Correct.
Well, the supplemental lunch reimbursement is a state, a new state program that was a carve-out.
But we weren't getting that before, we're getting.
Well, we were through local sales, yes, because the reduced price students had to pay for that. But now it's, they're not and we're getting that reimbursement from the state. The farm-to-school was a new opportunity, yes. It doesn't mean that if we received that last year, that it would have made last year's bottom line look better because it would have just been expense going right out the door, that's just kind of a wash.
Okay.
Good question.
Okay, other questions? Okay. Jennifer Hannan, Eugene Field.
Okay. Well, not for me, except you, y'all. You want to see the cute kids.
Maybe turn on the back ones, eh? Turn these off and the back ones on.
Okay, Eugene Field. So at a glance, our profile information, we currently have three hundred and thirty-five K-two students and six third graders. Fifty of our students are English language learners. Thirty-one of our students qualify as homeless status. Fifty-eight percent of our kids fall below the poverty line. We've had thirty-six children enroll at Eugene Field since September and twenty-four withdraw. and twenty four withdraw. Twenty one is our average class size, though that's a little misleading because our kindergarten classes are about seventeen, eighteen and our first and second grade classes are twenty three. We have thirty one classified employees, twenty seven certified employees and about forty volunteers a day. The first thing that I wanted to talk about in thinking about what I want to highlight about Eugene Field School. The thing I think that we work the hardest at and that we are the most proud of is our teaching. And the district goal that goes with that is a hundred percent of our teachers will be proficient or distinguished in the area of student engagement. Student engagement is defined as virtually all students are intellectually engaged in challenging content through well-designed learning tasks and activities that require complex thinking by students. And you can see why that's the thing that challenges us the most and the thing that we are the most proud of. Because when you're talking about five-year-olds being intellectually engaged in challenging content through well-designed learning tasks and activities that require complex thinking, there's a lot of work that goes into that. So our model for elementary instruction is we start with whole group instruction. And that used to be not as intentional and directed as it is now. Small children are sponges. They're going to learn if you put them in an environment that's a learning-rich environment. But we've really been working on targeted learning goals and the kids being very intentional about what you're learning. So you can't really, behind the teacher there, it's posted an I can statement. So all of these kids, as she's teaching, know what skill they're learning and what strategies they're going to use to learn it. After whole group instruction, which is about fifteen to twenty minutes, they move to learning centers. And this is where it gets really challenging with small children to keep them engaged in activities that require complex thinking skills. We have leveled small group instruction. That is with the teacher and those can be a swing of two grade levels in the same classroom. So that is leveled, the whole group instruction is on grade level instruction and then the small group leveled instruction is at the student's level. So that could be pre-K all the way to third or fourth grade level in a single classroom. Then the independent learning centers, this is where our staff has really targeted our focus this school year. And learning centers used to be activities at the table groups that kids would move through in their leveled groups and work on the skill that was just taught. But how well the kids could really work on the skill and engage in the material to learn and do complex thinking was kind of hit and miss. So now at each table group, there's something like this where it's a learning target. So this one is at a table group and it says making inferences. Readers are detectives. They use their schema and evidence from the text to help them make an inference. And that's kindergarten classroom, by the way. And they can tell you what an inference is and what their schema is and what strategies they will use to find it. I tested one at a birthday party on Sunday. What's your schema? I can tell you. So the activity at this table group is what can you infer about the fish? And then on this sheet, it says I'm inferring and then they will write what they're inferring and then they tell their partner which strategy they used to infer it. So we are working kind of center by center in our reading, writing and math centers to make sure that every activity that the kids are engaging in is focused, that the kids know what they're doing, that they're using multiple strategies, that they're engaging in complex thinking and that they can demonstrate their learning. So it's been a job, but it's, we've come a long way, I think, in a short time. Our other district goals for ninety five percent attendance, we currently have fifty nine percent of our students not meeting that goal. We have a big campaign for the final fifty days of school, which starts on April fifth, to try and push that we get a hundred percent of our kids at ninety five percent attendance.
Is there a general reason why they're not?
You know, I looked at that this weekend and mostly it's illness. I mean, we have those that are chronically absent, but of those fifty nine kids, it's mostly illness and, you know, little kids, we don't have great, you know, germ control. Three hundred and fifty small children, lots of body fluid.
You really don't want them there.
We really don't. No, no. And I think, you know, kids who start out in childcare centers and preschool are kind of already exposed to the germs and build up the immunity, but many of these kids have never been in a school setting. So it's, that's kind of how it goes the first couple of years.
Is that rate a little lower than what you've seen in the past or on par from what you've seen?
It's about the same.
About the same. Okay, so no major blip this year or anything? I'll just say, I know, using my sample size as my own family, it seems like it's been a hard year for sicknesses across the area. So I was just seeing if that was some, you know, maybe it was a hard year for flu.
That just kind of go through and, you know, there was one bug this year that seemed to be longer than the others, but as a general, I mean, yeah, little kids get sick quite a bit, so it's bummer. So our on-grade level reading and math goals, we run an early intervention program in the areas of reading, math and self-regulation. An example of self-regulation would be child thinks it's time for recess and instead the teacher needs to reteach a math skill. So what does the child do with that information? Do they say, oh, and move on? Or do they completely melt down and start crying and knock a chair over? So how well they can manage a school setting, disappointment, frustration levels, staying in a routine, following class procedures, that's what we define as self-regulation. So we run an R I E model in K two now. This is the first time we've done it with kindergartners. We did it for first, second and third graders last year, but right now we're doing it for our K two students. So for the remediation, kids who are barely at or slightly below grade level access our Title One Room for small group skills practice. So when kids move into those independent learning stations, if they are students who are below the level that can really engage in independent learning with those complex thinking skills, we swing them out into an intervention group to work with our specialists. And then intervention, kids who are more significantly below grade level access L R C for an alternate instruction method, using a different curriculum, a different way to teach it. And then our extension kids, kids who are consistently at or above grade level, stay with the classroom teacher for extension opportunities in the classroom. So every student who stays in the classroom for those independent learning centers should be able to engage in those tasks. So since we have used R I E, we've had a thirteen percent drop in students performing below grade level standards in reading and math and we're actually at fifty three percent now reduction in special education referrals. In other news, we just had our annual reading under the stars family night. We had three hundred and ten people come. We gave away three hundred and sixty four bags of books, or two hundred and sixty four bags of books. That is two hundred and sixty four bags of books. We will not be moving to Mark Twain. Take another bag. So I put this picture up here, these classroom libraries that we used to have, teachers would have shelves and shelves and, you know, many teachers have retired from Eugene Field over the years and left their classroom libraries in the building. But we do Q R codes now. We're one-to-one with iPads. So the kids, all their books, the teachers can program them at their reading level with Q R codes. So we don't have to pack the books around, which is a good thing for the germs and the dust and all of those things. This is our new logo and colors. It was dicey for a bit because we let the kids vote. We have lots of rainbows and purple and sparkles and mythical creatures. But the parents won out with the Mark Twain kits. So that is a baby fox and they are going to stick with the fox colors.
Looks good.
Kits, kits.
Kits, kits, yes. Mark Twain kits. The parents were, you know, all the youth sports programs, we already own that gear. Can we just go with that? Yes. Plus, it's a good message for kids. That's what they're aspiring to. That's where they're headed. Start with the end in mind. And our P T C is fully focused on transforming the middle school, which currently looks like the top picture, to elementary school, which looks like that. So they are fundraising and planning and buying all kinds of stuff to transform that middle school campus into an elementary learning environment. Questions?
No questions. Good job, Jennifer. Thank you. That was a good report. Leslie Roach, Robert Frost.
I am not as tech savvy as Jennifer this evening. So there's a little half sheet with some cute pictures printed for you at your desk. So just in sticking with the same theme that Jennifer was talking about, Robert Frost is really working on infusing our culture with academic purpose. So we have been spending a lot of time celebrating reading this year and so that's what's in front of you with your pictures. We believe that when we value reading as a school and that it's a part of our everyday culture, that it positively impacts our reading growth for our students. So we have a wonderful librarian, Jackie Renaud, who is spending lots of her time getting kids excited about reading. So of course we spend at least an hour every day instructing our students with reading. We also have students similar to Eugene Field who access our Title Room during reading time because they are below grade level and we have students who are also accessing our L R C who are below grade level. And so we have differentiation and support for kids who are low-level readers and then we have extension projects for students in the classroom who are high-level readers. This year, we have been able to do several fun activities to help with our reading culture. Each fall, our students sign up to compete in Battle of the Books and we had many, many teams at every grade level this year. And they competed at the high school a couple of weeks ago and then we had several teams who just competed over the week, this last weekend at the, not the district level, but the next level up when we compete against other towns and schools. And Jackie Renaud runs that whole program at Robert Frost. And so it's a great time to get kids excited to read with their friends, to compete. We also just completed our major fundraiser for the year, our Read-a-thon. And so students take pledges from their family and friends and they read books for weeks and weeks and weeks and take these reading counts quizzes at home and at school. And that's another fun way that we're getting kids excited about reading. And kids that haven't read a book this year have come up to me within the last two weeks and said, Mrs. Roach, I finished two books. I did two whole reading counts quizzes and will you, can you pledge me? And so they get really excited about it. And then we also just had a great opportunity to celebrate with our community for Reacross America Day, which is Dr. Seuss's birthday. That whole week, every morning, we started the day with muffins and juice with Dr. Seuss. And so each grade level had a chance to invite their families in and have breakfast and we decorated the library and they read Dr. Seuss books as a family. And so all of these pieces are part of our reading culture at Robert Frost and it's a way to get kids and families excited about reading and then to make this positive impact on our reading scores. And so when we look at our STAR District Assessment data, we're seeing growth and progress, which is, we know is a district goal that we're looking for kids to grow. And then I just wanted to end with the same kind of statistics Jennifer talked about. We have about five hundred students at Robert Frost, third, fourth, fifth and sixth graders. And we are getting prepared to transition those fifth and sixth graders to Silverton Middle School and they are very excited. We have five, sixth grade teachers who are moving on to the middle school and they are packing and organizing as they go this year. And we have just a wonderful staff this year who's so excited and so supportive and very willing and able to take on this big transition this year. And they've been just such a wonderful team. So I wanted to point that out to the board and thank them for all of their hard work and acknowledge how much they put into the school year. Any questions for Robert Frost?
You guys won't know what to do next year with all your extra space. It wasn't a great problem.
We've got some ideas.
I bet you do. Thank you, Leslie. Okay, moving on. Are there any board reports tonight?
Yeah, I'll share something. I want to just extend a job well done to the Silverton High School Theater Group in their production of Cinderella this past month. You know, was able to go to the fall production and then this one for the musical was nothing less than outstanding. I was blown away by the level engagement and the level of dedication these kids have to put on a musical production of that caliber and have a live orchestra at the high school level was pretty amazing. So, you know, Mr. O and his crew and there's, you know, Mr. Patrick is involved and I know missing other staff members, but and the students, just their time to put on such an amazing production was just, it was very, very commendable. And just to see their progress from performance to performance. My daughter's had a small part and is also on the tech crew, but just to see them from the last dress rehearsal parent night, which was quite rough, to the last closing night was just, was really cool to see over a week their progress. But in addition to our wonderful sports programs, I think people need to understand how awesome our arts programs and our music programs are at Silverton High School and just the high level and the high quality of what they do and the dedication that these kids show is pretty amazing.
Very much so. Thank you. Anybody else?
I made it to the Butte Creek Auction here. It was two weeks ago or so. Pretty good turnout. Everybody seemed to be pretty generous with their money, so.
Good.
I didn't win any of the loads of gravel I was trying to get.
They always do real pretty well with that.
Yeah, yeah. That and wine seem to go real fast.
Anybody else? I just had a couple of things. We get to the last few months of the school year and I get a little bit reflective. There is just some things, the last, just this last week or ten days that hit me that things, that we can be very proud of this school district. I went last Monday, the Monday after the bad car accident where our teacher and student were killed. I was stopped at Bethany and the high school both and just to see the flight, the flight teams that we have in this district working with the staff and students, very special thing, those people taking care of the needs of, you know, staff who were hurting and kids who were hurting. And to see the staff who aren't on the flight teams, but to see them helping the kids and to be at the high school and see the library full of kids and they're, you know, talking to each other and counselors helping them and staff members helping them was a really cool thing. We can be very proud of that. And then, you know, kind of to the other extreme, down at the state, the girls' state basketball tournament this last weekend, besides the girls battling really hard to win two awesome games, and especially Saturday night, to see the amount of people from this community that were there supporting our kids. There were, I bet, a couple thousand at least and it was, you know, we had probably, I don't know how many more, but a lot more people than the opposing team. And to see, you know, to see our band there for all the games and our student section completely packed and those kids doing what they're supposed to do. They were energetic the whole game, cheering. They were loud. But they were, they were well behaved. They were respectful. Just to see, you know, we can be really proud of our kids. And I talked to Mr. Hannah today at conferences and he said he got an email today from the head of security at Gil Coliseum who commended him, commended our district for how well our kids acted and behaved during the games. And that's consistent. We get that every year. And he said he was hearing from a lot of O S A A people too with the same reports. So, you know, besides the girls winning, we can be very proud of our kids in this district and our staff who worked so hard to make it what it is. So hats off to everybody. I just wanted to hit those points tonight too. Okay, any correspondence, Andy? I think we don't have any. Second audience with visitors. Would anyone else like to address the board tonight? Okay, we decided to have one action item tonight. Make up a district closure day on January fourth due to inclement weather. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second it.
Moving second it. Is there any discussion? Todd second. Is there any discussion?
So let me just point out the point of order here that the vote will be is to make up?
To make up.
To make up.
Yes, yeah. I'll just say again, I'm, you know, I kind of go back and forth on these sometimes, but I just think that, you know, our staff and students, everybody has worked really hard this year and I just, I don't know. Guess I'm not a big proponent of making it up this year for some reason.
I go back and forth as well. I think kids get to learn a whole lot at home as well as a school, but we have already committed a hundred thousand dollars or so to, for that school day. I think we ought to go ahead and have it. What's the last day of school? What day does it fall on? Have we decided that?
Right now it's a Thursday. It's a Friday.
So we're asking them to come back on a Friday?
It would be.
And be fully focused?
Oh, that's always a good conversation to have.
Yeah, that's always a question.
Of course, Ron.
There is always a last day of school, right?
Isn't usually last day half? And isn't usually last day, half day?
Yes, at most of our schools.
Okay, so they'd be coming back for a half day?
So, right now, the last day is June sixteenth on Thursday. This would move the last day for kids to June seventeenth on Friday. And then teachers would come back on Monday, June twentieth. So, just to clarify, this vote would, you would be voting for making up the, the one closure day? So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes is supposed to raise their hands?
Yeah, let's, let's do my hands. All, um, yes? Two? Um, against?
Four.
Okay, so I guess we won't make it up. Okay, kids will be happy.
Teachers will be happy.
Teacher will be happy. Okay, um, with that, we're gonna take a five-minute break and then we'll go into executive session under ORS one nine two six six oh to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Thank you.